It is now it is now 5:01 PM and I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today we will start with a hearing session for our closed session agenda items. Mr. Faval, do we have any cards for closed session?
No, we don't. We don't have any.
Alrighty, then we're going to adjourn into closed session. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are returning from closed session. There is no reportable action. And so now it's time for the flags to leave. Clear? Would you lead us?
Yes. When you begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we will consider approval of the minutes of our September 13 regular meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
A second. Any discussions? Okay, we will take a roll call. Mrs. Lopez?
Hi.
Ms. Pacheco.
Hi.
Mrs. Leiber?
Mrs. Leiber?
Hi.
And I vote aye. We've had a special meeting on September the 30th. And so we'd like to consider approval of those minutes. May I have a motion to approve? I'll make a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Um, let's start with Mrs. Leiber. Hi.
Staying, I wasn't at that meeting.
Hi.
Mrs. Lopez?
Hi.
And I vote aye. Hearing session. Now we come to the community relations portion of our meeting where we receive input from the members of the community. And before we begin today's hearing session, I just wanted to review the procedural guidelines. And that is basically that the Brown Act, which is the open meeting law, prohibits the governing board from taking actions on any items that are discussed during this time that are not already on the meeting agenda. So if you make comments and all we say is thank you, please know that that is because those are the procedures during the meeting. We are listening to you. We very much appreciate your input and I wonder if we have any cards today?
Yes, we do. And just welcome to everyone here and our 31 attendees listening online. First one is Jessica Richer, subject COVID-19 response. And it reads, Dear Mr. Chairman and esteemed members of the board, I'm the parent of two students attending FUUSD schools in person. Would like to address the mandate issued by Governor Newsom on Friday, October 1st, with respect to COVID-19 vaccination status as a prerequisite to continued in-person attendance for all TK through 12 students beginning the semester of FDA approval after FDA approval for the student's age. San Marcos Unified School District BOE has issued the following public statement. San Marcos, California, September 29th to 2021, statement on behalf of the San Marcos Unified School District Board of Education. San Marcos Unified School District Board of Education would like to reiterate our current position on the issue of a student vaccine mandate. The board will not be opening a discussion about vaccine mandates for students, nor is mandating vaccinations in our plans at this time or in the near future. The board stands united in this position and is committed to following the guidance of our public health officials. Or would like to publicly thank our staff and school families for their dedication to creating an exceptional learning environment for our students during these challenging and unpredictable times. Board of Education San Marcos Unified School District. I am urging the FUUSD board to issue a similar statement, reiterating our district's commitment to our students and families' health and safety as well as privacy by continued local development and implementation of best practices to manage the COVID-19 pandemic as guided by public health officials and state law. This latest mandate is overreaching in executive authority, circumvents legislative action and limits local authority to act in the best interest of its constituents. Thank you for your time, Jessica Richard. Thank you for that. Our next comment will be live by Tara Jenkins. Subject of comment is mandates.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, we can hear you.
Super, thank you. Um, hi, I first like to start off by acknowledging, I think you guys are very experienced in caring staff and teachers who I admire, as I know a lot of you. But I'd also like to acknowledge we are all pro-science and safety, no matter what our opinion is. As I heard that turn around in other board meetings, but one side isn't. And I also want to share with you that I was a former teacher as well as a pharmaceutical rep who sold a flu vaccine that was recalled a few years later for safety concerns. I actually was going to speak to you tonight about masking, so I didn't write up anything about giving a vaccine mandate because I had done this a little bit before Newsom's order. Although some of what I'll say that relates to masking will relate to vaccines and I'll have to come back and talk to you about vaccines next month. But that being said, I'm just wanting to ask for parental choice as soon as possible. I acknowledge and realize that you guys are facing fines if you don't comply with the mandates given by unelected officials like the California Health Department and the county health agencies, as well as elected officials like Governor Newsom, who don't really have the authority in our constitution to make such mandates. It needs to go through our legislative branch and go through due process. But as our elected officials, our elected school board officials, I would still ask that you guys would represent our questions to these agencies and departments and politicians when you have the chance. And if you're able in the future to put it on the agenda and vote on what action the school board would like to take, even if you can't follow through and just send a referendum like San Marcos just did, it sounded like, that would be wonderful. It was also brought up that you guys have been doing a wonderful job having transparent anonymous surveys where families and teachers in the community can share their true feelings on masking and vaccine mandates with their children. And I would just ask that you continue to do that, make them anonymous, so people feel safe sharing their real thoughts and transparent. It's been said that the science has been settled on masks and vaccine. I would politely disagree with a series of questions that science is just beginning or hasn't yet evaluated. First, I'd like to begin with what do we, what we do scientifically know about masks? When you look at any mask packaging, it says, this is not FDA approved for the stopping of spread of communicable diseases. Sorry, I have a three-year-old in the backyard. He's interrupting, but anyways. So, and this is because the virus is one one-thousandth the size of my hair follicle. So wearing a surgical mask to prevent these particles from reaching others is like trying to stop sand from being thrown through a chain link fence. I was in the military as well and we have regular training with expensive sealed masks that we would wear.
All right. We've reached the time limit.
Thank you for that. And that would be it for this portion. We give out comments during the human resources section.
Excellent. All right, we now are at the stage for board reports. Mrs. Lopez, would you like to start us?
Sure. Kind of a quiet month for me, mostly just participating in community-related events, although I was able to sit in on the governor's speech about the vaccine mandate. I found it very interesting just to listen in on this process and what he was talking about. I did attend Stagecoach yesterday. That was my first time in participating in that community event. I'm going to make the assumption I didn't win any things and get a phone call. But it was fun and it just looked like all the kids and parents were just having a fabulous time. So that was, that was good for me. I will be participating in the Harvest Festival coming up later this month with Rally for Children. We'll have a booth there. Kind of doing what Karen did yesterday with the pumpkins. We'll be decorating pumpkin, having children decorate the pumpkins. Looking forward to our live Oak visit coming up in the next couple of weeks and very much looking forward to our board trainings coming up later this month.
Sure, I did have a chance to visit May Ellis Elementary. My children have been attending for a few years, but it's good to see so much more of what's happening at the school. So it was very, very good visit there. Glad to hear that there are many resources available at the school for teachers. Learned about our literacy tosses, our intervention coaches, our innovation lab coaches as well. Our teachers, and I know that's at all our elementary schools. We have these staff at all our elementary schools. So very good to see how, how much, how resource our students are, our classrooms are, our schools are. So that was, that was great to see again. Looking forward to the next visit as well. I also do want to mention that I think last month I mentioned how my son came into contact, had a close contact in his school and the procedure that was taken there. My daughter, who was in fifth grade, also had a similar situation last week, but luckily they both came out negative after the tests. And I want to say that how strongly it feels been the safety precautions that our schools are taking the masks. Everything that we have in place has been working. Really, I feel strongly that that's, that these precautions have, I feel very good about these precautions that we have in place in our schools. So I'm all for doing everything we can to keep our students safe and our teachers safe, everyone safe. Public education, public health, go hand in hand. So very strong support of that.
Mrs. Lieber.
Yes, I, I was lucky and got to attend Ray Proctor's retirement. So Cindy, Mrs. Martin, congratulations. I guess you're so official now, right? The last board meeting, it was still, we hadn't actually fully retired. So it was a lovely retirement. Nice job. It was hottest day probably in the corridor here, but just lovely homemade tortillas and racing to really enjoy himself. Great turnout. He's done a wonderful job for our district. So it was nice in this time of COVID, giving him a sendaway out in person. So I think he, over thirty years, he served our district. Done a fabulous job and now he's smart and we're so lucky to have you. And I attended the May Ellis site business and found it very, very informative. Thank you. Really a nice site visit. I had to leave a few minutes early, but I was really impressed with just nice to see those tiny little classrooms again, you know, I mean, the small classrooms and everybody working and it was nice. And class size makes a difference. So really excited about that. And I did help out it. This is Levis's amazing Stagecoach Sunday and she was holding out, but she did have a stagecoach. Didn't want to promise it, but it was spectacular. It was a full-on stagecoach with like the Budweiser commercial horses. The whole deal and people that came to my table that weren't able to ride on it were very bummed. There was a long line, hot, another hottest day of the year. But yeah, it was very fun. I always enjoyed participating and you did a wonderful job. And that's my work.
Yes, please. I was also able to visit May Ellis, which I don't have a student there anymore. So it was really nice to be back on campus and to see the mural that Gloria Rocha did. To finally see that in person, I was part of PTA for many years and helped, you know, fundraise for that. And so it was, it was so much, went so far above and beyond what we had expected and wanted from that. So it was amazing. And the, we learned about all our, our new staff positions and it was neat. We ran into the literacy coach while we were there and she was all excited about a resource that she had found online and she was sharing with the teachers. And it really was a great demonstration of how important those positions are. While the teachers are teaching the students in the classroom, she's there searching for things online and looking at the best way to use our new curriculum. And you know, it's just a great way to maximize our resources. I forgot to mention last board meeting, I think it was before that, I was able to meet with Mrs. Norby as a representative of the Faber Land Conservancy, I met with Mrs. Norby and our district STEM tosses to learn about their plans for expanding the, I'm not sure if you're calling it outdoor education.
Expanding our outdoor learning opportunities.
Learning opportunities, thank you. And I know they're going to present to the board when they get finalized, so I won't spoil any of the details, but I'm really excited about their plans. And I got to go for a walk with Miss Flaherty and Miss Wilcox Hall at Lucy Heroes and talked about some of the details about getting kids out there. And one of the things I really love is they're planning to integrate the teachers into the programs, to really train the teachers to lead the classes, not just bring their students out and hand them over to a docent. But I think that's going to go a long way towards sustainability in the program and making sure that those teachers are comfortable and, and hopefully, you know, encourage them to do more on their own. And I have been very busy planning and working on Stagecoach Sunday. And thank you to Mrs. Lieber for volunteering and Mrs. Lopez for coming out. And even Mrs. Sigrid Stillman came out with her family, one of our past board members. So it was really nice to see her. And I know we had a lot of our, our district families there, lots of little kids. And it's one of the first, you know, real big community events that I've been to in the last year and a half. And it was just, it just filled my soul to see everybody there together having fun, even though it was extremely hot. That's what I've been doing.
Congratulations on such a successful event. Sorry, I was not able to be there. I'm also sorry I was in Chicago when we had the May Ellis site visit. So it sounds like it was awesome and I was fortunate getting there. As I mentioned at our last board meeting, I'm back in school with this master's in governance class through the California School Board Association. And I forgot how hard you have to work when you're in classes like this. Every session has this giant notebook. And thank you Stephanie Weaver for consistently printing out these hundreds of pages of materials for me. But it's been a fabulous experience. I'm doing an eight-hour session on Friday on school finance. Cindy, you've prepared me. I'm, you know, I think I'm in good shape having heard you do our reports. And then on Saturday, it'll be another eight-hour session on human resources and collective work. So very appropriate. We've so far done one on governance and student achievement and educational board policies and setting directions. And so it's been a great program. Really feeling very privileged to attend and hopefully I can bring more to the table as I learn about this. And I look forward, when it's over, to be able to get back to going to our schools and seeing the teachers and students and parents. But in the meanwhile.
Will you have an opportunity at some point, or will we have an opportunity for you to share with us some of the information that you have been accumulating over this period of education?
I'd be delighted to. And it'll actually be a good thing, more work, but it's good. Because what I probably will do is create some sort of an outline of what the key points were. And whenever I do that, I know it helps me.
That'd be awesome.
Pull that information in.
That'd be great.
It's been great.
Will, will the other two new board members have an opportunity to participate in? We're sure. The masters in governance. So sometimes, as you know, it has a calendar and then it repeats itself again. I think we have our last bit session where I think we're going to be able to pick up that last one and then, then they start over again. So it's actually as hard as it is that it's virtual, the masters in governance, because we'd like to meet in person. It's been convenient because they've been able to offer them more frequently. So we will absolutely keep our board members informed of when, when they're offered next time. Everybody couldn't do it this time. As you've been doing it this time, but pretty soon you'll all end up being caught up and then all will have had the chance to go through it.
That's right.
Yeah.
Carve out the time.
That's right. That is what it is, right? It's, it's, it's a lot of time. We appreciate that time.
Oh, no, it's, it's really been a privilege. And Dr. Singh was a resource to me in our first session. So thank you so much for doing that. Speaking of Dr. Singh, we'd love to have your superintendent.
Thank you so much. Well, good evening. Thank you for those wonderful supportive comments of our staff and the various events that have been happening. The one thing I just would add, Mr. Favela, you brought it up, is that our testing protocol, I just wanted to share with you. One of the things that, as you mentioned, that we've said all along since the start of the pandemic is how proud we are of the mitigation and safety strategies we've had put in place. And this year, as you know, we've started our, every school site has testing available for students who may have been a close contact in a class, but also for staff members. We do a number of testing of staff members as well. But I wanted to share with you that as of today, we've tested over three thousand people since we started. And that has been the reason we've been able to keep our students in school. Right now, we only have nine active cases of COVID district-wide, every school, every department. And I really, as you've said, and as you've all have mentioned at one point or another, we really know that it's, we've taken this seriously. We've invested the resources that we've needed. We've had the leadership in place who have created systems in order to do this well and in an organized way. So one thing I'm so pleased to share with you is that now that we feel like we have a handle on all of that. That was a big undertaking, right? All of getting the testing in place. We are looking as November first as our start time to return parent volunteers to our classrooms. So we're giving that a little bit of an on-ramp because we want our offices and our principals and our teachers. We have, will have a very specific online system where our parent volunteers will need to show proof of vaccination to volunteer in our schools and an online system for uploading their vaccination card, proof of their TB test, which has always been the case, and agreement to our code of conduct for volunteers. Those are things that have been in place for many years. But we're giving our schools enough time and we'll start working with everyone now. We feel very confident now that we have systems in place and that we can take on the next thing, right? You know, if you, if you try to do everything at once, you sometimes don't do things as well as you'd like to. So I'm really happy to share that with you. I know that also for our parents and staff members who may be listening into our board meeting tonight and for you, you know, there's a lot of questions related to the governor's announcement last Friday. We, I just would reiterate to you, you know, as with all of the executive orders that were given by our governor during the course of the pandemic, you know, we take our time to watch and listen and, and look for more and, and more specific guidance as we move forward. And that's where we are right now. We aren't doing anything other than to ensure that we are continuing with the safety protocols. We feel very confident about the things that we have in place in our schools right now to keep students and staff members safe. And we are following the law. And that's really the most important thing. We're following the law. And then, and then we'll watch and we'll, you know, wait and, and continue to be in, up close to knowing how to implement whatever the mandate is, whatever, if it's an executive order, it's a decision by the legislature. But there's still time and there's still some, we have a lot of observing and waiting to do as we watch what happens over the next several months. In the meantime, I just to reiterate to you and reassure our community that we feel very strong, strongly, and we are very confident that our classrooms, thanks to the great work of our teachers and our support staff, that our students are in really, really good, good, capable and loving hands with the people who greet them every day at our schools. So that, so that's all I have for you tonight. So thank you.
You're welcome. Board operations is our next item and we have two action items. The first is resolution number zero seven dash two one dash two two. And this resolution is the continuing of the Board of Trustees authority to hold virtual meetings pursuant to maybe three sixteen one. Do I have a motion to approve?
I move.
Thank you. Do I have a second? A second? Thank you. Mrs. Levis, would you like to start the vote?
I.
Sorry, sorry. Thank you, thank you. I appreciate that. Do we have a discussion?
Yeah.
No, I. This is, this is actually a controversial issue because you know, we are elected by the community and we have to weigh the safety of our staff and our, and ourselves against being open to the public being able to come into a meeting. And, you know, I'm still struggling with this. So I went to a couple of the board meetings just to watch, to see what the problems were, if there were problems. And I tried to read the articles. Thank you for sending me those. So I'm still struggling with it, is all I have to say. You know, I went to the high school board meeting, which is being held in the John Burton Auditorium. And there were a nice turnout of people that wanted to speak, but they were very respectful to spoke. Twenty were there. There was a mask issue. There was a mask issue. And I'm just wanting to comment that we really have to think this through because we have to weigh the two sides of it, of course. So that's my comment.
I, I think it's, it's just important to remember though, too, that, that we're not stopping people from participating. You know, they, I know that there are some limitations with some people in having internet and computer access. But, you know, anybody can speak during any of our meetings on any of the topics that they so choose. So I think for right now, we're not really limiting them except for being in the room where we are.
Any other thoughts?
I, I wanted to mention, I think it's important to state that this doesn't obligate us to having virtual meetings. It gives us that option while we figure out what was the best next step. Because I agree, we need to get to the point where we can have meetings with the public.
My thought was, it would be nice, I, I know this is extra work and I don't want to create extra work, but at one time we didn't have this room. And if we were, I know that the planning commission, do they still meet at, at Live Oak?
They're virtual. Yeah, they're virtual. They all are at home, zooming.
But I just thought it would be nice to at least look at the costs. I'm not saying we should do it, but it would be nice to see how complicated it would be to go to a larger site to have these meetings so that we could accommodate. This is a very small space and I don't see any way of accommodating social distancing. But I'm not saying we should do it. I'd just like to know what it would entail to possibly move this to a site that would allow for the public to attend.
I can summarize for that. I can summarize what, what, what would this, what steps would we need to take to, what staff would be involved? You know, what's the impact on a school site? That sort of thing. You know, as you know, we met for many years at a school. And, and it was such a, just a beautiful thing to be able to create a boardroom. Because the impact to the school site, you know, and the staff at the school site and things that they may have set up, for example, at a, you know, in a multipurpose room that have to be taken down in order for the board to come in, the technology that it takes to set, all of it. So this was the, this room was designed for this purpose so that it can stay set up. But times are, we're really in a different place, Mrs. Lieber, as you've said. So you're correct. I also would reiterate to Mrs. Lopez, as you've mentioned, that we have really, I, just to commend our technology staff. We've created a really effective opportunity, very, sometimes not without its mistakes every now and then, but the opportunity for community to call in in an effective manner. And in a way that I feel my continued recommendation to you, at least at this point, is that we are able to adequately support commentary and input from our community, which is so important. While at the same time, I feel very confident and to know that as we continue to observe the kinds of things that have been happening in meetings across our county and across our country, that we're keeping our board and our staff members in a, in the safest possible position. But we all know that that's not how we want to be in the long, long run. So I appreciate your support. That continues to be my recommendation. And, and I, and thank you. Thank you for your, for your support with that.
Very good input all the way around. Thank you for that. Other thoughts, comments?
I, I think virtual meetings are actually more accessible. I can't tell you how many meetings I've attended with my computer open while I'm making dinner. Kids are in the other room reading or doing their homework. And so I, I hope, you know, I hope we can go back to in-person soon, but I hope we will continue to be able to do virtual. Because I think there's, especially, you know, being an elementary school district, there's a lot of parents who might want to listen in who couldn't be here for, for a long meeting.
Mrs. Levis, that's consistently the feedback I receive as well, is how much people appreciate the opportunity for a virtual meeting. They don't have to load people in the car and take care of things and come down and they still have access to remember. And, and, and also to remember providing opportunity for the public to have input, which is so important. And this is, but this is your business meeting, right? This is a meeting of the business of our school district. So the opportunity to have input, we want to continue to create that space. But then we have to be able to move on and conduct the business of the district, which is really why we're here. So I appreciate that as well.
Okay, I think we're probably ready for a vote. Is that be correct? Um, let's start the other way.
I already voted a tie.
Mrs. Sigrid?
Hi.
Mr. Favella?
Hi.
Mrs. Lopez?
Hi.
All right, that resolution passes. The second action item, there are two board policies that are part of this action item. Board policy 5148.3, which is preschool, early childhood education. And the second is board policy 6174, and that's education for English learners. First step, may I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second? Second? Righty, discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Singh, for expanding on the, the professional development part of the English, you bet. English learners board policy. I think that's so important because we can have all the policies in the world, but if our teachers aren't trained and know what to do, it's not going to happen. So.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Other comments? Nope. A vote, Mr. Favella?
Hi.
Hi.
Should I have passed this? Human resources. We have two information items. The first is the Fallbrook Unified Educational School Districts 2021-2022 Initial Proposal to the Fallbrook Elementary Teachers Association, otherwise known as FEDA. And the second is FEDAS 2021-2022 Initial Proposal to the Fallbrook Union Elementary School District. Any comments about either of those? They're information only. Questions?
Discuss them already, didn't we?
Moving to the action items, we have four action items for human resources. So at our last meeting, we had information items for the following two. The first is to the job description for a new supervisor of accounting. And first, may I have a motion to approve? I'll make a motion. Thank you.
Yes, I can.
A second.
Discussion, comments, questions? Is there a ten?
Public comment regarding five and six.
Public comment regarding five and six.
So we can approve the job descriptions first and then we have a public comment. A person would like to make public comment on five and six.
Get back to my numbers.
So we're on number three right now.
We're on three right now. Okay. See, I did a script for myself, so I don't mess up. But then I forgot to pull out the original one, which is right here. Thank you.
Sure.
Out of the numbers. Okay, now I know.
They want us to wait until five and six or they want?
We have a person who submitted a public comment for five and six.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, first is the job description for the new supervisor of accounting. Motion to approve.
You already have it.
Did we do that one?
We didn't vote yet.
Thank you. All right, let's vote, Mrs. Lopez.
Hi.
Mr. Favella?
Hi.
Hi.
Mrs. Levis?
I, I vote aye as well.
The job description for the new supervisor of payroll. Now I have a motion to approve. I'll make a motion to approve. Thank you. A second?
Second.
Discussion, comments, questions?
I just think this is so smart to break these into two separate jobs. If they're, they're both accounting, but they're very different areas of accounting. And now they will both report to Mrs. Martin and can benefit from her extensive knowledge. So it's really a smart move.
Thank you.
And thank you for the information that you shared with all of us individually. That was helpful, too.
You're welcome. You're welcome. My pleasure.
Do I have any other comments, questions, or votes? Hi, Mr. Favella?
Hi.
Mrs. Lopez?
Hi.
Mrs. Lieber? Hi, I vote aye as well. All right, we are now versus five and six. So.
She wants live comment.
All right, we are waiting for a call in.
She's live.
Ask her.
Okay, so we have public comment from Sandra Force. Are you on?
This is Force.
Yes, yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm speaking with reference to the public notice of job descriptions for two more brand-new administrative positions. Supervisor of Personnel and Supervisor of Accounting. I cannot believe how outrageous this is. Why are two additional administrators needed? Increased enrollment to serve or track? More teachers to hire and monitor? We already have an Assistant Superintendent of Personnel and an Assistant Superintendent of Accounting. Do we really need two more supervisors to help the current Assistant Superintendents? Have they recently become absolutely overwhelmed with new and additional duties? If they have lots to do, well, isn't that why they are so highly paid? Judging by the current administrative salaries, I would conservatively estimate that it will cost at least another $125,000 per person annually in additional district expenses for salary and benefits for each new administrator. Once these two positions are added, they will remain. So over the next four years, that is an additional $1 million just in ongoing new executive salaries. If existing off, executive officers have too much to do, just require them to complete what is described in the teacher's contract as additional duties as needed. Teachers spend their evenings, hours after school dismissal, and weekends to complete ever-increasing workloads and duties. When it comes to administrators, however, they just hire more staff or bring in more clerks to lighten their responsibilities. Let's consider how two proposed administrative salaries could better be used to benefit students. Once COVID restrictions abate, as a former teacher at Potter, I can think of many productive ways to spend $250,000 per year there. How about additional counselors? How about classroom aides for ESL or PE teachers? How about additional teachers to provide more electives or in-house tutorials? How about resuming voluntary after-school homework club with onsite teachers for students? We did this for years and even provided a late bus. How about after-school enrichment workshops for crafts or music or games? How about more drama or music presentations by university troops or professionals? All these exciting and enriching activities are more possible if the district is willing to allocate district monies to benefit the students. This district obviously seems willing to spend several hundred thousand dollars more per year just on additional administrators. But why aren't we discussing instead how to spend that much money on our students? If there's extra money around, it needs to be spent on school services, not supervisors. I observe, urge the governing board to vote no on the two proposed new positions. Please focus instead on using district resources to support.
Time ran out. Thank you for your comments.
Do we have any other comments on this, on these items?
No.
Thank you.
I just have one additional comment, and that is Mrs. Martin did this job from what I hear from Dr. Singh in juggling a very complicated job. And you can't expect us to replace Mrs. Martin, and we can't clone Mrs. Martin. So I think that there's just a kind of a misunderstanding about the value. When you have someone who has just moved into in a very important job, feeling that the best way to handle this job is to split it because it will support her making her best decisions. I can't go against the value of her need. So I just.
And thank you, Mrs. Lieber, so much. And also, please remember, governing board members, is that we've eliminated the Director of Accounting position in order to create two supervisor positions. So thank you so much.
I don't think it was decided on lightly.
Thank you so much.
That's a very, Dr. Singh, I think that's a very important point to mention that we are not simply adding two brand-new positions, but rather we are taking one position, eliminating that position. Obviously, there was payroll there. So we're not incurring the payroll for the entire two new positions, but rather we're redistributing how we use that money and doing it in such a way that further strengthens our business office.
I would, I, one other thing, thank you, Mrs. Lundin. One other thing that I would add, as you all know, we've talked about this at length. The folks who support our schools at this district office play an essential role in order for us to be able to do what we do for students. So whether it's accounting, payroll, maintenance and operations, facilities, CNS, educational services, human resources, our schools would not be doing what they're doing now if it were not for the people at this district office who support the work that's happening in our schools. And I'm incredibly proud of them. We are very appropriately staffed. And these two new positions, as you know, we are eliminating the Director of Accounting to be more efficient and hire folks that have unique skill sets to do the job and do it well in an area that's incredibly important, which is the finance of our school district. So thank you so much for your support.
I think a great discussion and good information. I think it's important to address community concerns about costs. And I think we've done that in a good way. So for the first, the supervisor of accounting position, I need a motion for that. Make a motion. Do I have a second? Do we have any additional discussion on that item? More questions, comments? And let's take a vote, Mrs. Lieber?
Hi.
Mrs. Levis? Hi, Mr. Favella?
Hi.
Mrs. Lopez?
Hi.
I as well. Motion carries. Approved. The next item is supervisor of payroll. May I have a motion for that? Second?
A second.
Discussion, comments, questions?
I do want to mention that there will be, there could be a cost increase.
Yes.
If it's a reasonable one, because you are splitting two jobs and you don't know where these people that will be hired will fall in the pay scale.
That's true.
There is a job that's been eliminated and so it won't be a full additional. It will be incremental. So I just wanted to point that out.
You bet.
I think it's reasonable.
You bet.
Any other comments? All right, let's take a vote, Mrs. Lopez.
Hi.
Mr. Favella?
Hi.
Mrs. Levis?
Hi.
I, I as well. Educational Services. An information item is the annual report regarding the LCAP Dashboard Local Indicators. California's local control funding formula and accountability, accountability system requires that district progress is based on multiple measures. Local education agencies, such as the Fallbrook Union Elementary School District, are required to annually measure the progress on each of the five local indicators and report the results to the governing board during a regularly scheduled public meeting, which in this case is today. Any questions, comments? I think we've all read, but are we going, oh.
Mrs. Norby's going to do a representation for us.
Thank you. Mrs. Norby's presentation.
Been feeling left out. I haven't had a presentation for a couple of weeks.
They've handed you the control now.
That's right. So I'm, good evening, governing board members, Dr. Singh, cabinet members, and all of our people out in virtual land. It's my pleasure tonight to be able to talk with you about the progress that we are making in some, some very important areas. And also to give you a little bit of history about the California dashboard, which is, as I was saying to Dr. Singh as we got ready to start, it's a little cattywampus right now. I'm going to give you a presentation on something that it's been in existence for many years now, but has been suspended. So nobody really, who might be new to the board, really knows what that dashboard is. But I guess you have to start somewhere. And the state is starting with the local indicators, which is probably a really good place to start. So a little history, and some of this you'll recognize from before. The, the dashboard is a pictorial example of how we are progressing, both on state standards, state indicators, as well as local indicators. You'll see that little dashboard up in the right-hand corner, that little gauge. I'm going to show you a picture in just a moment of what our dashboard used to look like. They use those little gauges to determine a color coding for different areas. And then there is another area, which is called the local indicators, that actually is just a met or a not met. You don't get a color for that. And then we're also allowed to use our local data, things like our panorama survey or parent surveys or our STAR 360 data. We're able to use local data, data in combination with the required data that we must report to make the very best decisions for our school district. And as you all know, we make all those decisions in our LCAP. Um, so all of those things are used annually to um, adjust our LCAP, to report on our LCAP, and then to modify the actions that we might be taking. So it all works together um, for the ultimate goal of improving student outcomes. So a little bit more history. If you um, were familiar with the dashboard, this is what it used to look like. If you typed in California School Dashboard and typed in Fallbrook Union Elementary School District, or any district, you would get a cover page or front page that looked like this. And it would have some of the indicators, as I mentioned, um, giving a color, and some of them given met or not met. It is a very complex formula to do, um, explain to you about how you receive a color. I will do it when we come back with that report. But for tonight, we are strictly working on just the local indicators, which are the last um, five there on this, on this slide. So you may remember um, from previous presentations that there are eleven different indicators that we have to report to the, to the state on. Two of them are, are not representative of our district because we're not a high school district. So college and career and graduation rates are not reportable for us. So of the state indicators, we have the academic indicators, which of course are ELA and math. We have our English Language Learners' Progress, which would be things like their, um, the rate at which they uh, transition out of ELD and reclassify. Chronic absenteeism, we must report, as well as our suspension rates. So those would be things that the state automatically generates into this report based on data that we give them. Then there are five local indicators that we get to self-assess on. Now they tell us the rubric that we must use to self-assess. And the way that you indicate if you've met that um, criteria or not, is not by how well you do in the area. That's very subjective. Um, it's if you did the self-assessment and you brought it to your board for approval, then you have met the criteria. So the criteria is in the self-assessment process, right? Okay. So let's talk a little bit more about that. So as I said, there's these, um, these indicators that we'll be working with, and I'll be going through each one. You also, as you said, received a report that showed um, the, the self-assessment rubric and how we scored ourselves. Although it's subjective, i- it's based on data that we collect. So it's based on our parent surveys, it's based on our teacher surveys, it's based on um, how, how we look with our curriculum committee at, at curriculum needs, teacher surveys that we ask about professional development, so it's based on data, just not hard science data like academic standards might be. So the first, um, the first priority is basic services, things like, do you hire qualified teachers? Um, do you have all, do all of your teachers have credentials in the right areas? Do you, are, are your facilities in good repair? Do you have instructional materials for all of your students? Happy to report, this is very concrete data. We're a hundred percent on this one. So it, not only, um, our, not only do we meet the criteria because of the data, but we also meet it because we're bringing it to you tonight. Um, it's an area that we're very proud of in our, in our district. And I know that our um, Human Resources Department and our administrators, as well as our Facilities Department, work very hard to make sure that these reports um, project this, this level of competence. The second priority is implementation of state standards. This particular item also is one that we're very, very proud of. We have very high-quality teachers who present our curriculum to our students in, in very high-quality ways. We also have instructional materials that are, are of equal high quality. Very proud of our new ELA curriculum this year, as well as the professional development that goes with that. Uh, and we're also, I think, in this area able to talk about our um, luminary arts and the fact that we're able to address the BAPA standards, Visual and Performing Arts Standards, in a way that we haven't been able to in the past, and that's been an area that we have scored lower on our rubric by our own assessment because we weren't able to do it as well as we're able to do now. The next priority is parent engagement. I think this is one that, um, as indicated by all of the times that we've spoken to you about, this is very important to us. So important that we have an entire goal written um, about it in our, in our LCAP. And so important that Dr. Singh includes it in her principal expectations um, for our principals in terms of what they're expected to do throughout the year, to make sure that we are continuing to offer what we have offered in the past, but exploring new ways that we can um, make sure that our parents feel engaged in our, in our community. Um, I would say highlights for priority number three are that um, prior to COVID, all of our surveys indicated that our parents felt very welcomed at our school. Um, and even now currently with COVID, that all of our parents, vast majority, I shouldn't say all, but in the high ninety percentile, feel that our schools are safe, and that our students um, feel welcomed, and that they are supported in our schools. Um, another area of strength there that we heard over and over again last year and continue to hear this year is the multiple forms of communication that we give to our families. This allows them to feel very engaged, even if they can't be in our schools. And I, for one, I know I'm very excited at the November first start date. Um, the surveys that we are currently, that we currently have on our website for parent input indicate over and over again, they're ready to be back in our classrooms, and, and we're ready to have them. And I have no doubt that this particular area will continue to grow in satisfaction as our families are able to be back on our campuses. The next priority is school climate. Um, you know from, from many presentations that we've had um, over the last year that we really are about the whole child here in Fallbrook. Its academics are certainly very important, but the whole child is equally important. And that school climate in which we are um, able to have um, our counselors on our campus, our assistant principals, and student leadership, that we're able to do these things in order for um, our, our students to feel not just welcomed, but supported, and all of the leadership opportunities that we're able to provide for them, so they feel actively engaged. And the school climate is very important to us, and all of our surveys indicate that our, our students feel um, very supported and very connected to our school. And then the last local indicators is access to broad courses of study. Um, and again, this is one that, that we feel that because of the addition of some of our things that we've been able to do this year, um, we're even able to have a stronger score in this area, specifically with the area of the visual and performing arts, and with our PE program that we offer to all kindergarten through eighth-grade students with credential PE teachers. Um, the uh, hands-on innovation labs that we have in our integrated instruction, project-based learning, dual-language program at May Ellis and the Language Pathway at um, Potter Junior High. These are all ways that we're able to support this broad course of study for our students and, and remembering that, yes, academics are very important, but there's more to an education than just math and reading, and we want our students to have a, a broad experience. We're also in, in this area excited about all of our expanded outdoor learning opportunities um, that, that we're beginning to employ once we can get out of our schools. So that um, concludes my formal presentation. I, I'd like to close with just how proud I am of the progress that we're making in each of these areas. I'm also equally excited about the goals and actions in our LCAP um, that are going to allow us to even strengthen our performance in, in programs in each of these areas, as well as other areas the state indicates that we need to be evaluating. Um, the opportunity for self-reflection is always good. And it's always a, a time of pride for me as I get to look at our programs and, and I, I, it's like intuitively, I know we're doing a great job out there. I see it in my classrooms and I, as we walk and I see it in our schools. When you actually have to really justify why it's a four, or why it's a five. It, it, and, and you, and you want to be honest about it because you want to have from areas to grow too, so. Um, so I'm, I'm excited that we're, that we have this opportunity and that we can celebrate our strengths and identify areas for growth. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you for doing a fabulous job.
It's easy when we have fabulous things going on out there.
It's, I mean, it's amazing the different things you've added in, in a time when most of the world's in chaos. We're doing pretty well.
Nice. Thank you to your parents back in our campuses, and that would be great too. Well, thank you to all of you. With your approval of this tonight, we will have met all of those standards that officially met, and I can report that to the, yeah, state tomorrow.
Thank you, and congratulations. There's so much to be proud of, and it represents a lot of hard work.
Yeah.
Um, so we need a vote? May I have?
Just information.
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 We just have to present it to you.
You have to receive it.
You just have to, we have received the reward. Yeah.
Thank you.
You bet.
Um, workshop and conference attendance is the next item for information. Questions, comments?
But our, our groundskeepers are thinking about water usage.
Yeah.
Great opportunity for them too.
Uh, the next item is Williams Complaints, the first query lay report. Questions?
No complaints.
No complaints, yay.
No complaints.
And we have an action item, and this is Resolution zero eight dash twenty-one slash twenty-two. It's the sufficiency of instructional materials. Now, as I understand it, the Williams legislation is what this is connected with. It requires that districts annually certify the sufficiency of instructional materials at their schools through a board resolution by the end of the eighth week of the school year. Uh, and it is, the resolution is the sufficiency of instructional materials affirms that each student in the district has sufficient materials that are aligned to the academic content standards and consistent with the cycles and content of the curriculum frameworks adopted by the State Board of Education. Thought I'd give a little extra detail for those who are listening in. Um, do we have a motion to approve that? Make a motion.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Comments? Questions?
I'd say our instructional materials are more than sufficient.
Yeah.
All right, are we ready for a vote? Um, Mrs. Lopez?
Hi.
Mr. Favela?
Hi.
Mrs. Lieber? Mrs. Levis? I, and I vote I as well. All right, we are at the consent agenda. Are there any items that um, any board member wanted to separate out or had questions about, or have a motion to approve? Actually, I guess we should start with that, a motion to approve the consent agenda. Yeah, I have that.
I'll move that we, we accept the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion or comments? Hold on, let's take a vote. Mr. Favela?
Hi.
Hi.
Mrs.? Yeah, I'm trying to keep everybody on their toes.
I'm not sure where she's going with that.
I'm just so afraid I'm going to forget somebody. We're all there. Um, we are at the end of our agenda. Um, future agenda items for consideration. Need that a board member would like this to better for patient work. It is seven oh four, our board meeting is adjourned. Thank you.